Good evening, I'm going to call the Board of Selectment meeting to order for Monday, November 26th. As required by open meeting law, you're hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting the public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Calling the Board of Selectmen meeting back into a public session. Earlier, we had executive session to have a discussion on a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations relating to the hot stove restaurant contract extension at Cranberry Valley Golf Course. So, excuse me. I'll go on to weekly briefing, is there anyone for weekly briefing?
What a surprise.
Evening Carolyn.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I just wanted to let you know that on December 1st, the Harwich Cultural Center is having their open house and the Sound Dunes will be performing. They're a swing ensemble, it is free from 2:30 to 4:00. We also have free crafts for children, or adults, or anybody who would like to participate. And there will be open studios, so certainly come by, see what's happening in the building. That is on December 1st, 1 to 4, the Cultural Center, open. And you'll see flyers all around, and it is on the website, too.
Thank you.
And the next thing, I just wanted to let you know, I know that a lot of you don't know this, but I am personal friends with Santa Claus, and he dropped off a large mailbox at the community center for anybody who would like to mail a letter to Santa, and I have been told that he'll be writing back to everyone. So, if anyone would like to know, we have the mailbox right there, it's out, we have letters that they can do, so come on over.
Great. Thank you Carolyn. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements? Hi Cindy.
Good evening. As I stated last week, this coming weekend is Christmas in Harwich. Friday night kicks off with the tree lighting at 5:30 to 9:00, and the tree lighting will be at 6:00. Santa arrives via a fire truck at 6:15 at the chamber, and all the stores, shops and galleries will be open, as well as the restaurants. And then Saturday, something new we have this year is the Chamber and the Pilgrim Sonic Lodge will be doing Breakfast with Santa, 8:30 to 10:30, and tickets are $5 per adult or child, and available at the Chamber. And then the last item is the Saturday trolleys to Christmas Town are sold out, but we do have tickets for Sunday. And Christmas Town is once again at the Harwich Cultural Center with Santa.
Great, thank you Cindy. Excuse me. Anybody else for public comments and announcements? Nobody. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
There isn't one.
There isn't one? Excuse me. New business, apologize. Michael, would you mind reading it?
Sure.
Excuse me.
Madam Chair, this is a simple one. I request, I move that we approve the request by Building Commissioner to waive the building permit fee for the Brooks Park restroom project.
Second.
Moved in second, you gotta go, wanna go one by one or?
No, we don't need you this one.
Thank you. Okay. Moved in second, did any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
You may keep going.
Yeah, William?
Yep.
Sorry.
I move that we approve the request from N-Star Electric, DBA EverSource Energy to grant a license agreement to place new facilities, a transformer, at 1464 Orleans Harwich Road, which will allow service to Harwich Fire Station 2 during construction, effective until the permanent easement can be approved at town meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, did any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the request from Verizon, New England, and N-Star, DBA EverSource Energy to grant a license agreement to place new facilities, poles, at 1464 Orleans Harwich Road, which will allow service to Harwich Fire Station 2 during construction, effective until the permanent easement can be approved at town meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, did any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I can do it.
Keep going.
I can do it.
I'll keep going.
William, do mine, thank you.
I move that we approve the request from member Larry Brophy for permission to use remote participation for upcoming meetings at the Affordable Housing Trust, mid-December 2018 through March 2019.
Second.
Moved in second, did any further discussion?
Just ask Chris if he has a problem with this, as the chair.
Nope, none at all.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not doing this one.
Oh, right. I'm gonna do it. Crosswalk policy.
First reading.
First reading, right, and I gotta get to it.
Well Jerry's here as well, so I don't know whether...
So Madam Chair, maybe I'll do a, just a quick overview, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry, 'cause most of the work has been done by Jerry's group. But there has been a fair amount, in the time that I've been here, where we get different requests for crosswalks to be located. And sometimes, I don't know if the general public understands that there are federal guidelines that need to be met, there's the Uniform of Traffic Control Devices that we need to comply with. And so the committee, in working with the town planner, went through to establish a policy of, okay, if somebody wants to have a crosswalk, what are the criteria that should be taken into consideration, and how do people approach the town? So the committee has laid out a process, which I'll give Jerry the opportunity to kind of walk through, for folks at home that may want to have an interest in this topic.
Thank you Chris. It wasn't just the committee and the Charlene, we also had town engineer, we had Link Hooper, the police department, we had everybody weigh in, that wanted to weigh in on this. We didn't dream these up, we pulled information from other towns, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. It was kind of the Wild West out there before, people would ask for it, and then it would just go dead, or for some reason it would be turned down. So we've set a policy, we pulled some stuff from, I think it was Lexington and Concord, or one of those two, couple of cities up near Boston. And there was stuff in there that wasn't applicable for Harwich, four lane road crossing. So we pulled together what we thought was all the good stuff, went through a couple revisions, and this is what we ended up with.
Thank you Jerry. Excuse me. Do all members have any questions?
Nice job, it's very detailed policy. And I, after me, I didn't study it all, I paid attention that I had ADA compliance in there, 'cause that's one of the things we've historically been slack on, so I appreciate that. I was wondering Jerry if it would be possible to put a cover process page on this, 'cause this is pretty daunting, if people want to look at what's needed for a crosswalk. You know, step one, step two, you know, who to see to start the process, that type of thing might make it easier for people to use.
Sure. I'd also like to put it online, so that if a person wants to request, or is interested in a crosswalk, they can go to the website and figure out what's going on.
And just say, you know, this is who to do first, you know, just kind of, kind of help them out.
Yeah. As far as we found out, there's nobody on the Cape that has a crosswalk policy. If there is, we couldn't find it, and they didn't respond to requests put out by the Cape Cod Commission Traffic Division. So we're blazing new trail here, and I hope that other people take advantage of our information.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Jerry, the only question I have is, has there been thought in the committee, given to all of the spots in Harwich that don't comply with this policy?
There's, I did a Google Earth search, and I come up with about 40 crosswalks. About 20 of them are on state, and the rest are in town or bike paths. The bike paths comply with the ADA. Each side of the road is about $2,500 to $3,000 to put in the crosswalk ramps with a braille pad. It's not a cheap thing to do. So there's a couple here in the center of town, and others that are around that don't comply. Some of them are state, some of them are ours. There may be grant money out there, I heard of Ally, the previous planner, saying that there was money maybe available, 'cause the state is cracking down on the towns and cities that don't have them. But you have to do an inventory and a check of all the crosswalks, and go through that to be able to get the grant money. So I don't know if that has been done, or was on the planning, but...
Thank you. Chris, this question I guess to you, I know Linda Sibula, who's here tonight, three years ago when I served with Linda, I think it was three years ago, mentioned a crosswalks, specifically across from the fire department that was recently built, and it's handicapped accessible on one side of the road, but goes to a six inch or eight inch berm on the other side of the road. Have we thought in the capital plan, or any plan, on where we're gonna find the money to fix some of the ones that we own? Or is that something planning should?
Yeah, no, that's a good comment. Just to that point, I did listen three years ago, and we did put that on the plan, and one side did have a handicap ramp, and we did the other side. So where there's places where we know there's gonna be a lot of pedestrian traffic, like the Cultural Center, we want to make sure we do those. In the capital plan that we have, we do have the downtown Harwich Center Initiative Group.
Right.
And I think the concept behind this Harwich Center Initiative Group is to look at all the sidewalk network, including those crosswalks. And really, the rationale for that is, you think about, you know, different events that we have, there's an awful lot of pedestrian traffic that walks in this area, if it's going to a baseball game, or going to a football game. And to have a safe network of sidewalks and crosswalks to get there, I think is important. I think, at least from my perspective, you try to do some of the larger areas where it's more much of a risk factor, and look at those. I think to your earlier question, though, I think the MUTCD is, as I understand it, you know, it almost has elements of common sense. If we put a crosswalk on a corner, for instance, and you have traffic going 40 miles an hour, well, the MUTCD has in there that the stopping distance is 400 feet, or what have you.
Excuse me Chris, may I define those MCT for people?
Yeah, it's the federal standard that we have to follow, the manual on uniform traffic control devices is the... Thank you Larry. Sometimes I get too bureaucratic. But if you have that crosswalk on a curve, then someone could be in there, and you have to anticipate that a person using the crosswalk, it has to, you know, it's a person that's kind of in a wheelchair, or someone that's in a walker. So you have to anticipate the stopping distance of a car versus the person crossing into that crosswalk. And if you don't get where somebody can stop safely, then you don't put them in, because then you almost create a hazard. And if, I mean, when a crosswalk gets installed, the engineer does those speed analysis, and if the road is 30 miles an hour, and you have the 300 feet, or whatever the standard is, that you can stop in time, then you can have them located where they make sense. So we're not necessarily limited, other than dollar wise, to the specific location. I think dollar wise, you want to spend your money in areas where we have more pedestrian traffic.
Does the state ever contribute monies on the state roads, or is that on us?
That actually, yeah, came up legally and officially, it's a state obligation. They do rely upon us to do the crosswalks.
We fought forever on a crosswalk going, come within farms, that corner, remember a couple of years ago, the state refused to spend money to correct it, so...
Seems kind of ridiculous.
There's two items that, excuse me, it's contagious.
Contagious.
The crosswalk at the police department, the Linda Sibula Memorial.
Linda Sibula Memorial, ADA accessible crosswalk.
In doing our research, I found out that when a contractor has a project going, that they are responsible to put in the ADA crosswalk, and they're supposed to do both sides. So the town had to bite it on $2,500, $3,000, 'cause nobody knew that, nobody pushed it, and it didn't get done. And the other thing is, we plan on doing an inventory, and get on there and find out which crosswalks are ADA compatible. At Embers and the Melrose, there's a crosswalk that goes from a sidewalk to a grass area. It's totally non-compliant, but that's a state problem, not a town problem. It's a town problem, but the state's responsibility, so there's other things that... It's gonna cost a lot of money to bring them all up to code, and, you know, people are requesting it at the same time, and where do you put your money?
Well, speaking to that, in terms of a development, et cetera, going in, I run into that, in terms of different towns, where they'll tie it into the building department review to, with the DPW, to see what's gonna be done for sidewalks and such, so, you know, maybe that's another level of review we could look at, in terms of signing off on projects.
Well, we can put a note in the page for Link to remind himself of that.
Okay. Thank you Jerry. Any further comments?
None.
Okay. This is just a first reading.
Nice job.
Yeah, it's very good, thank you, and it's nice to be ahead of the curb on that. No pun intended.
Okay, and we will be working on the speed bump traffic coming.
Great, thank you. Larry?
Oh, that's, Jerry took away my question. I was gonna remind us, mind everyone, that we, a few months ago, we said we were gonna look at a speed bump policy.
Yeah, right.
And before we get into next spring, we should have that come back.
Agreed.
And you're taking that on with your committee, the speed bump? So when's the, when's your end date?
Well, the update is, we found some information, I asked Bob Caffey to look for some, and he found some from the city of, town of Wayland. So, we're letting it go till after the holidays, 'cause it's just crazy busy with everybody's lives, so.
Well, it's great you're taking it on, we'll look forward to it in, first time, sometime in January, you know?
Link has got some information from one of the agencies, that basically say crosswalks are a bad idea, that they prefer to see a speed hump, which is a longer, shallower version, and then a speed table, or a speed plateau, which you find in some places, goes up for a distance of 20, 30 feet. And then there's all kinds of traffic coming.
Bombing devices, eh?
Yeah, that, you know, people go to what their old school is, and...
Well, I'm happy your committee is taking a look at it, to come up with a policy.
Thank you Jerry. Onto old business, water, wastewater commission language revisions.
Yeah, my apologies, I realize as I'm going through the package, we didn't get the proposed revisions in on the sewer regulations, but I would like, I'd like to at least talk about those, and we'll try to get them in for the next one. On this one, I thought I would kind of follow the lead a little bit of the board, from our discussion at the last meeting with the water, wastewater. Since the revisions were fairly minor, it's too bad that Don's not here tonight, 'cause I know he had a couple of the revisions. But we did do an article last year for town meetings consideration, and what this is, is in the charter, to amend right now, we have just a water commission, and there is no provision in the charter for wastewater. So the town, through the Board of Selectmen as sewer commissioners, is doing that through statute, not through the charter. And to try to reflect more accurately how we do with the charter, we have the proposed language. A lot of this is what we had proposed for last year at town meeting, with a few corrections, if you would. First is just, it really isn't just a name change, it is also to add additional duties and responsibilities there, too. So a water commission becomes a water slash wastewater commission. So now you have a whole element of sewer law that needs to be built into it. So it is an administration of the Sewer Chapter 83 in Master General Law. The other one, who is in the commission itself, it's to go from three members to five members for elected overlapping terms, so it retains the elected element, which I believe was kind of a, something that the water commission, because they are elected, certainly thought was important. A few corrections that we have in here was the, take out the language, this, that's in the charter, that the wastewater superintendent shall request this officer to cooperate with and be responsive to the requests of, or from the town administrator's office. So we just cleaned up that language a little bit in that. We had to update the dates, so the vote of, it would be May 6th of 2019, would be the vote of town meeting, and then would take effect in 2020, if the townspeople voted at the ballot. So those are just more updates to the change. And one of the comments that had came out last time, is that I think that the original language just kind of tried to mirror a little bit the charter language about the administrator having the ability on really procurement, to kind of oversee some elements of that. We just struck that wording following initial approval by the town administrator, because the charter is already clear on what role the administrator plays relevant to the water commission. But those were the changes, with the board's approval tonight, we can certainly send a note down to water commission, I think I did share this with the water commission already, to put on their agenda, but if both parties voted, then we can get it on for the warrant for the May 2019 meeting.
You have any questions?
I don't.
Chris, the only thing I thought about when I read this, and we've talked about it previously, it's the three member to five member elected board, what if we don't get five people to run? I mean, we have a hard time getting people to run for things. Should there be a provision in there that says appointed or elected? Or if nobody runs, should we have any...
Well, there is a default provision already in the charter, that two elected bodies can get together, similar to what we're kind of waiting for, the housing authority.
Okay.
So if there's three, and we don't get two others, that you will have the opportunity to appoint.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, that's a good move. Okay, I, let me see, let me get to the top of this. So you want a motion then, that...
Yes.
I move we accept the amended, as written, the document to amend the town charter of Harwich, amend the town of Harwich charter to change the name of Water Commission to Water Wastewater Commission, and to add additional duties and responsibilities there, too, as written in the document.
Second.
Moved in second, did any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Chris.
Thank you. The item, I think I would ask for the proposed revision, the sewer regulations be held, only because it didn't, I don't, at least I don't see it in the packet, it didn't make it into the packet. But we asked attorney, I asked Attorney Giorgio to put together, to do two things. One, to review our current sewer regulations, and then there's another element to that, that our regulations have to mirror the Chatham regulations. Mirror is kind of a, I think in some areas, we have to definitely mirror, in other areas, we just have to be consistent with. And Attorney Giorgio did put together a letter, which I'll put in the packet, but basically asking for two things. One, to allow for consideration that if we propose a change to our regulations, and this letter would go to the town of Chatham, their Board of Selectmen acting as sewer commissioners, that if we change our regulations to allow for a sanitarian to do the plans, as well as the PE, obviously a PE can do it, a professional engineer, but also expand that to allow for a sanitarian, would they have any concerns with that? I did have a meeting last week with, in which I brought this up again, with Bob Duncanson, kind of their person over there that does a lot of this, and he doesn't believe that there's really gonna be any pushback on that, that they'll be supportive of the sanitarian. And the second component was that, instead of hooking up within one year of receiving the notice from the Board of Health, they would have two years. And again, I don't believe that that's gonna be inconsistent with the language or the spirit of the agreement, and I know Mr. Duncanson had again, kind of reiterated, that they found that the number of contractors available, the, you know, the time that people have, giving people more time is, it just makes more sense. So Attorney Giorgio did draft that in the form of a letter, I'll make sure that it's in the package for the next one, so I would hold that. But the idea would be that we would send it before the board votes it to the Chatham Selectmen, make sure they don't have any issue, and then let them hopefully vote that they don't have any issue, and then it can be voted by the board to amend the regulation. And then we would allow for that to occur, for folks that are considering those items.
Right. So I'll bring that back next week. And then on to the town administrators' request.
Thank you Madam Chair. Not too much tonight, just in terms of, we had a short week last week, and just a reminder on the budget warrant timeline for December, December will be a busy month relevant for this. We have on December 10th, actually Monday, December 10th, the BOS review and discussion of potential warrant articles. So I will, as we do the presentation on the capital budget items, several of those will generate warrant articles, and the departments are gonna submit warrant articles for consideration by this Friday, so I won't have a good look at that until, really by the end of the week. And then on Monday, December 10th, a separate item here, but relabeled on the same day, that the town administrator officially submits a 70-year capital outlay plan to a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. We probably should have on there as well, the Capital Outlay Committee, they work hand in hand with administration in terms of the development of that. So the board will have a overall review. I think one of the things that I will look at doing is see if I can do a simplified version, and then do the more detailed version of those two plans. And then pretty quickly after that, Monday, January 7th, after the holiday, is a Selectmen, FinCom, Capital Outlay Committee hold a joint public hearing on the submission of the capital plan. It does seem like we talk a lot about capital, three or four times, before things get finally voted. So we will have December 10th and January 7th for the capital plan. And just for the, Monday, January 28th, would be the Selectmen and FinCom to discuss the first draft of the budget, really the five-year plan with Monomoy and with Cape Tech. And the one that I kind of focus the most on is, I have Monday, February 11th, is when I have to submit the balanced budget to the board, and put together the budget message. And actually, the Friday before February 8th, is the article deadline, and the warrant closes, so noon time on February 8th. We probably could shift that to 4 o'clock on some of these dates, now that we'll be open. And probably just a reminder to folks, as of January 1, we will be, Town Hall will be open from 8:30 to 4 o'clock, Monday through Friday. So the evening hours on Monday will be curtailed, or stopped, and the Friday afternoon, we will now be open until 4:00. And then the next item I have...
Let me just, before we move on to the next one, I would like to see us firm up the March 2nd date as soon as we can, you know, 'cause time flies, and you might as well try to get that, or whatever date we choose.
I think to that point, you know, again, with only three members, it may be good to have all five, but, you know, are people, do the Selectmen like having the all-day Saturday, or would you rather have two or three early evening meetings, and then we can break up the budget into three relatively equal pieces? But, you know, I think that in the time that I've been here, I think I've been here for, I've been here five years, we've done it three ways, one way, and two ways another. But I don't know, I mean, with the board changing, if, whatever the preference is, I think Saturday tends to be a long day, and people get a little ground down at the end.
Well, I mean, in my experience, I've only had the Saturday, so I don't know how the other one panned out for you. Did you have that?
I actually, go ahead Michael.
I enjoyed the free lunch.
There you go, I'm with Michael. No, I, and I thought, I liked going through it all in one day, actually, without coming back and forth.
More comprehensive.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll stick, I think we'll stick with that.
If we add it to nights, it's gonna be, it's that many more meetings.
It's gonna be even harder to schedule.
Right. So we'll stick to, and I mean, I think, you know, we can solidify that much, second date next week, when...
Right, when everyone's here.
I'm fine with the March 2nd.
Okay.
I do think, one of the things that we did last year, which I think made it go more efficient, is we just grouped them, so if people came in, we had some flexibility, so we didn't have to wait around for the agenda. So we'll make sure we do that again. The next item I have, I was hoping to have additional information on this, back, actually, almost two or three months ago, it's amazing how, there's so many different components to things that come up. We had a resident, I believe from a neighboring town, who had a concern about disturbing the peace at the Fish and Game Club on Depot Road. And I did go out, actually, we had a meeting in my office, and then they invited me to go out to the site, I did go out to the site, I will, just for full disclosure, they asked me if I wanted to shoot, and I did shoot, I hadn't shot since I was about 18 years old. That had been a while. But, you know, I found the site to be very remote. I thought that they were very cognizant of what they're doing and safety. And, you know, the one thing that really kind of stuck with me is, and I don't remember the year, I want to say that they've been in operation since the nineteen twenties. And so, you know, they've been in operation for almost a hundred years. And, you know, I recognize as development occurs and people move into the neighborhood, you know, twenty or thirty years afterwards, that doesn't preclude that the neighbor was there first and has certain rights and privileges. What I was hoping to provide, and I did have a conversation with attorney Giorgio on this topic, and his initial reaction in our conversation was that he didn't believe that we had any regulations that he could think of that if we wanted to regulate, that we would even have the power to regulate. So, attorney Giorgio seemed to believe that the, in this case, the club being there for so long, that they basically had grandfathered rights, if you would, to continue their operation. And he didn't see a mechanism forward. Where we had a little bit of confusion was he was reminding me that the town of Eastham apparently has a rotting gun club. But in that case, it's town-owned property that the town leases to the club. So, there is the ability to regulate only because the town is the owner. That does not exist in this circumstance. So, I did talk to attorney Giorgio, I think it was Wednesday just before the holiday, and asked him if he could do, you know, another review just to kind of confirm his thought to me that we probably don't have any ability to regulate in that area. If I had to guess, I mean, I've been in government for a while, but I think the federal government reserves to its right, to itself, the right of ATF, alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. And I would think that, you know, any issue regarding that operation wouldn't be a local jurisdiction, would be my sense.
Chris, if I may, Julie, if I may, I attended that meeting. The one thing that I took out of that meeting that I thought was excellent information, they use an electronic entry system to the building and to the grounds. They know when everybody's in there. So, in the complaint, it said many, many days, nearly consistent from eight AM until eight PM. Based on the charts that they showed us of the people going in there, that was a very inaccurate statement, so. And I found the same thing. I thought the club showed up with very, I attended the meeting with Chris. A lot of representatives from the board on the club and they kind of went through all the things that they do. But the stats on the entry of the place showed that there's not the shooting there and that it's been alleged.
Larry?
My comment only is, I guess, kind of general, but I always hope that when people bring concerns to us, they will give us credit for trying to look out for the entire town because we weigh a lot of input. And I found the statement that, please don't be, about, please stand up for every residence. Don't allow yourself to be intimidated by the gun crowd. I thought that maybe was a step overblown. You know, we're trying to listen to people and take into concerns. I actually don't know who the gun crowd is in any case, but on all issues. You know, I appreciate when people, this is a genuine concern, raise it as such. And then let us just try and deal with it, let us try to deal with it rather than jump to conclusions, would be my only. I guess I'd like a more positive request.
Yeah, I know what you mean. I mean, at the end of the day, we're bringing it here for discussion and, you know, had a meeting and such. I mean, to Chris's point, it also is something that's been in existence for quite some time. So, you know, it has certain rights to be there as well. I mean, unless there was a larger issue at hand, I think we've addressed it, so.
I think one thing that, you know, I've developed a deep appreciation for, and I have worked in a couple of other states, is that Massachusetts really does it right in terms of a man's or woman's property is their property. And they have some ability to use it the way they would like. And that we have a very large commitment to that as a Commonwealth of Mass. And I, you know, I went to other states and was shocked that in other states, if you don't have your lawn mowed, the town can go in and mow it and send you a bill. And I was shocked that that kind of ability to go on to private property was in there. But, you know, I think that that's something that is, shouldn't be taken for granted, that individual liberties is important. But that actually, I did find, just for the record, I found the note that John Giorgio had done. We didn't make it scanned, so I will put it in. The staff did have it, but we didn't scan it. But that concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chris.
Regarding Chris's report on departmental reports, I just wanted to mention that on the police report, Lieutenant Costadine attended the Spatial Olympics in July Stadium. And I think I always appreciate when our, we have someone participate and that's certainly worthwhile events. I wanted to, you know, add, I'm sure we all do, a congratulations for him taking part in that.
Absolutely.
Wow, it's a great event. It's nice to have representation. Michael?
No report.
I don't have anything either and I would reiterate Carolyn's earlier messages, but I think I would choke those. Give that a go.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.